Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. I really appreciate it. Actually, I wanted to clarify something the chancellor just said. Those are the two main topics about which I will speak and take your questions, hopefully a lot of them. But there's any other question that you may have concerning whatever, please feel free to ask. If I can help answer it, I'll do that. If not, I'll refer it to someone on the campus. So I appreciate your having me this morning. I am not an aficionado of fashion design, but I was told to wear Levi's today, so I hope you folks don't mind. It is for a great purpose. I think most of you know that my wife and I have run a foundation for abused women and children for 15 years now, nearly. And we've built shelters across southern Illinois for those children of abuse. It is at crisis proportion in the state of Illinois right now. And we keep trying to help in the best way we can. So I'm glad there's a statement to be made by these little buttons and everyone wearing denim today. So I'm glad to join you in that. All right, we're going to begin with the budget situation. And I'm assuming I'm on, right? I can walk around? Okay. I want you to understand a little bit from the perspective of the campus as well as the state, how the budget is developed. Here on the campus, and by the way, everything that I have in this presentation has been given to me by the Planning and Budget Council, Bill Winters, the chancellor, and others. So I'm not giving you anything new here at all. You can go online, right there, and find all of this. But our budget development process for the state budget is very collaborative. It involves a number of constituencies with primary involvements, the UPBC here on campus, which makes budget recommendations to the chancellor. The University Planning and Budget Council includes representatives from faculty, staff, and students. The process for developing the state operating budget begins two years in advance of the final approved budget. So the process for FY14, which we're looking at right now for the next fiscal year, next calendar year, actually, fiscal year, what am I talking about? That began in FY12. In the fall of 2012, we began looking at projections and revenue streams and expenses and so on, which has been presented to the Illinois Board of Higher Education, to the governor's office, other entities throughout the state. So this began two years ago. It's not final until the appropriation funding level for SIU is approved by the legislature. In recent years, this has occurred as early as May and as late as September. So it is up to the discretion of the governor and the General Assembly how quickly they approve our budget. They've never approved it before May and sometimes as late as September, especially during the last three or four years, when we've had cash flow problems because of the state's financial condition. The non-state budget, this process is different for each fund group. For example, SIU's fee units, the Morris University Center, the Student Fitness Center, and others, undergo a thorough internal fee review process, which involves the preparation of extensive detailed financial forecasts by the fee units and their committees, and includes a financial review and input by a large number of constituents. The VC for Student Affairs and the Student Government Association engage in a process to make fee increase recommendations. These recommendations for the mandatory student fee units, including requests for fee increases or new fees, must be approved by the Board of Trustees. Now, assuming we have a board at our May meeting, which isn't always a correct assumption these days, but assuming we do, both tuition and fees are on the agenda to be approved in May by the board at one level or another. And we'll talk a little bit about that later. Okay, let me give you a little bit of information here that was compiled by your folks on state operating budget historical data. Now, this is just for Edwardsville. You can see that in FY2002, the Edwardsville campus was getting about $73 million a year from the state. And the income fund, which is the tuition and most of the fees, or a lot of the fees, was about $28.9 million in that year. Fast forward to 2013, you can see that the state's appropriation for SIU has dropped from $73 million, nearly, to a little over $59 million. So while the state's appropriation has gone down, and this isn't indigenous to us, it's true of all public education universities in the state, the income fund has risen extensively to make up for the state's failure to keep their own responsibility for higher education intact. So we've gone from in FY02, $28.9 million in the income fund, that is tuition fees, down to, or that has risen now to $86.5 million as a portion of our revenues. So you can see how important enrollment growth has been during this time that you folks have accomplished here. Because had we not had the enrollment growth and the offset in tuition and fees, we would be hurting if we had to rely that much upon state appropriations. They just haven't kept up their responsibility. The state operating budget historical data here, as you can see in FY02, the state apprope with 71.6% in FY02 of our funding. Today, it has fallen to 40.8%. The income fund was 28.4% and is now assuming 59.2% of our revenues, of our income stream. For every tuition dollar a student paid, the state paid in fiscal year '02, $2.52. Today, for every $1, every $1 of tuition a student pays, the state is paying 69 cents. I don't know how to say it otherwise, but because of the financial condition of the state, this has occurred and we've got to rectify it. It's, you can't go on like this. And the state has almost abdicated so much of their responsibility for higher education. I don't know how we change it adequately. It's going to take a long time. For the FY14 budget challenges that are peculiar to us, enrollment growth is no longer assured. The last two years at Edwardsville and the past 22 years at Carbondale, we have seen enrollment decrease. Actually, two years ago, you had zero. And last year, you lost about 160 students, as I remember. That's the best in the state. Other state universities have lost into the thousands, like Northern Illinois University. Carbondale's lost in the order of 1,200 per year over the last two years. So Edwardsville, by comparison, has been doing very well. But enrollment growth is no longer assured. The recession and everything that we've been in puts less money in the pocket of middle and low-income parents, and they have less of an ability to enroll their kids in college. Providing additional scholarships and financial aid funding to enhance student enrollment is very important to us. On the state's part, you've seen MAP funding go down, the Monetary Assistance Program for students, go down. And at the federal level, we're just now trying to increase a little bit, the Pell Grants and the Stafford Loans and those programs that support students. So we have to do more of it on our own. And developing these additional scholarships and financial aid helps the enrollment, and you've done a pretty good job of that. Operating and maintenance expense for new buildings, not provided by the state, and these are the science buildings, art and design, engineering, the Lucas Annex particularly, is going to cost us about $1.1 million in FY14 just to operate. And a total recurring expense greater than $2.5 million. Now, we didn't have this expense a couple of years ago that we now have to assume for the operation of these new buildings. The state used to give us, over a period of years, funding for the operation and maintenance of a new building. They no longer do that anymore. So we have to assume all of that out of our own operations budget and facilities budget. The potential loss on this campus of about $1.25 million in pharmacy funding, this is critical for us. The state established funds when new pharmacies came online sometime back, such as ours. And they established several millions of dollars in these funds. And we have gotten $1.25 million, actually, we've gotten up to $2 million over the past years. It was reduced to $1.25 million and then now is being taken away from us altogether in the governor's budget. That is not to say that that will be the end of it. We are working right now to try to find a way to get that funding back for the pharmacy. I'm pretty confident that maybe we'll be able to manage that in the end. But if we do, it won't happen till the end of the session, when everything is being put together. But we're certainly trying to do that. And in any case, it's not going to be as if, and chancellor, you can back me up on this, I guess, we're going to run the pharmacy no matter what. Okay, it's not going away. This loss of funding, we're being told that the fund has now dried up altogether. In truth, I think what's happened is, at the end of the last two years, the governor's office has swept all the money out of funds like this that support the pharmacy and several other entities associated with higher education. So the money is not there, either by design or potential of no tuition and fee rate increases in FY14. Right now, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but the campus has recommended to me a 7% fee, or I'm sorry, tuition increase for this coming year. And Carbondale has recommended five. I seriously doubt if we can get the board to agree to anything, it will probably not be more than 3%. They may not allow any, even though both campuses are the lowest in the state in tuition and fees. Carbondale among the five major research doctoral granting universities, and Edwardsville among its peer group. Actually, Edwardsville is the lowest in the state because you don't count Governor State. It's a two-year university. So we have these budget challenges that we have to take into consideration that we didn't have even a couple of years ago. Now, I want to show you something here, and you cannot read this. I understand that, but let me try to guide you through it a little bit. This tells you where the money goes. And I asked the campus to prepare this for me last year. And this is the FY13 operating budget with state appropriations and the income fund. You can see at the top that our state appropriation adjusted for the state budget reduction, which was 6.14%, last year we were reduced, after being told all year long that we were going to have a flat-funded budget. At the last minute, in May and June, the speaker decided that higher ed was going to be cut by 6.14%. That's what passed out of the General Assembly, and that's what we had to sustain. So last year, we were cut to $59,746,000 in the state approps, which is that first line there. We, our income fund, which supported a 4.8 tuition increase to offset that, to try to offset a lot of what the state had reduced, was $86,517,000. So we raised 86 here through tuition and fees. We went down to $59 million from the state. So our total state appropriation and income fund together is $146.263 million. That's what we have to work with in terms of operating our university, from the state and from our tuition and fees. Now, if you look at the next section there, this section here, you will see that salaries for faculty and staff as well as student wages take up $118,856,000 of that $146 million. That is 76.48% of our operating budget that goes to salaries for our faculty and staff and student wages. So take that off the board as it presently exists. That's not anything we can do about. Those are contractual obligations we have to our people. And I think that included last year a 2.5% increase in salary. Now, if you look at the next section, these are fixed costs. They range from everything for $1,800,000 for group health insurance, audit expenses, library materials, disability accommodations, institutional memberships, property insurance, fire protection, debt financing, awards and grants, liability insurance, legal counsel reimbursement, rental of real property, operations and maintenance, utility expense, unemployment compensation, commencement exercise, new retention-based initiatives, telecommunications services, PC and office equipment leases, computer software and licenses, postage and postal charges. Altogether, those amount to $22,200,000 or another nearly 16%, 15.18% of the budget about which we can do very little. We can negotiate at times with the utilities and others or on health insurance or whatever. But this will always remain between 15% and 17% of our budget, the fixed costs, about which we can do very little about. If you look at the next section, you see other expenses, travel and operation of automotive equipment. This includes essential travel related to our faculty, the accreditation, travel between campuses, and so on. This takes up about $1,331,000 or about 1%, close to 1%. If you go down to the next one, equipment and commodities. This includes classroom, lab equipment, printing services, and so on. That's another almost $4 million, 3.877, or 2.65% of our revenues and budget. Contractual services include mandatory legal and professional services, required system contingency, which is what I require the universities to put aside every year. And if we're in good enough shape for me, that amounts to about 2% or 3% of your budget. If we are in well enough financial straits, then I will release that money to the campus. If we're not, it goes to keep a balanced budget. And we ask the chancellors to hold on to that and make sure the budget is balanced. So that's the contingency that's included here in the contractual services, which is about $6 million, nearly $7 million, or 4.78%. So that's 100% of the revenues and expenses that balance against each other. This is what we spend the money for. Now, let's assume that the chancellor and the, being helped with the UPBC and so on, comes forward to me in the next couple of weeks or so and says, "I want a salary increase for our people." What I deliberate about with the chancellor is this. "Okay, we got to look at this." Now, right now, the governor's budget includes a 5% decrease in funding for us that comes out of those state appropriations up there, out of the present $59 million that we get from the state. So reduce that by 5%. That's what's on the table right now. Even though we are spending a lot of time in Springfield, negotiating with legislators, with leadership and others, to try to reduce that 5%, the House has told us already that they're going to do everything they can, at least the House Appropriations Committees, that they're going to do everything they can to reduce that 5% cut down to a lower figure. And the House has actually been considering a 1% cut as opposed to the 5% cut that's in the governor's budget. We don't know where that will end up until they actually pass the budget in May at some point. Hopefully, it's in May. And tell us what that state appropriation line is going to be. But let's say that irrespective of what that line is, there's likely to be a reduction. If we ever got flat funding, I would be greatly surprised. But that's what we're continuing to work for on state appropriations, is flat funding. That's as good as we can ever get, and we may get a lot less. But let's say that we get the 5% from the governor's decrease. You take that off of the $59,746,000. We may get a tuition increase at some level, and that will be added into the income fund. So we'll have a new figure there. But most assuredly, not the $146,263,000 we have for FY13. Now, let's say that the chancellor authorizes, and I agree, for a salary increase of 2%. Let's just throw that out there. I don't know what's going to come to me because frankly, the chancellor's still negotiating and talking to faculty and other constituency groups. But let's just use that. What that will do then is readjust this personnel services line item for salaries. So you're going to get less money from the state. You're going to get some money from a tuition increase to make up for that, although it won't cover it entirely, the decrease. And now, we're going to put another 2% of the budget into salaries, let's say. It's at $110 million now. That'll raise it another $2-plus million. That has to be adjusted then down the line of fixed costs, travel, equipment, commodities, contractual services, and so on. So any increase in that salary line item will have to make, will require adjustments up and down the line. And those fixed costs, we're not going to be able to mess with those too very much. As I said, they always range from about 15% to 17%. So it will be the job then of the folks that advise the chancellor here and myself to sit down and figure out what kind of salary increase can we afford in regard to the operation of the entire university, pending what the state does, pending what tuition increases we get. So that's where we stand at this point in time. We can't finalize anything until the state tells us exactly what we're going to get. And we're hopeful that certainly before the end of May, we ought to know that because they're set to adjourn, I think, May 30. But at any rate, that's just a little overview. And Bill, is this online? Bill Winters, is he here? Can they get this online anywhere?
It's not currently online. We can put it online.
Can you? Is that okay, chancellor?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's put that online so anyone can get it. Okay, next one. So you can see we not only have a declining state appropriation that went from about $72 million to $59 million over the past few years, but we also have a cash flow problem in that even though there's been a drastic reduction in state support, they don't pay us on time, even with that reduced support. And you can look at, for instance, FY08. You can see that at the end of July, we were only $4.6 million down, August, $5.5, and so on. But we had all of our appropriations by the end of June. And those were very little left from April on, actually. Skip down to FY2013, and you can see that we were owed $6 million at the end of July 13, and this just goes on up appreciably. We were, we got a little bit of an appropriate, the comptroller releasing appropriation from October to, no, I'm sorry, from November to December. They paid us about $4 or $5 million at that point in time. Went back up again in December. At the end of December, they owed us about $37.7 million. Now, they haven't paid us, so we're going to $44, $45. And this March, we got a payment of about, what was it? $8 million or so that reduced what they owed us at the end of March. And then we got another check a couple of days ago for about $2.5 million. So standing right now, just two months and a week or so before the end of the fiscal year, they still owe us 74% of our state appropriations. So we not only have cuts to us, they delay even the reduced amount so severely that we have to have things in place to take care of it. And the university and I sit down, almost month to month, and take a look at everything and say, "All right, what can we do?" Now, I gave the, I recommended to Chancellor Van der Grift two or three years ago, when this started to exacerbate itself, that we put a hiring freeze on both campuses. The Carbondale campus is now not filled, 502 positions. I think this campus, because of the increased enrollment and the money you made off of that, has been able to pretty much sustain everyone. There may have been a few staff positions that haven't been filled and so on. But I don't think this has affected the faculty yet, right? Okay, so, but we still have to maintain that in place as best we can, except for what the chancellor will recognize as a critical position that absolutely needs to be filled. And we are still maintaining in place the reserve funds that I require the campuses to set aside for the anticipation of state reductions, increased fixed costs, and other things. So those two things are double whammies for us, not just the cuts in appropriation, but the delay in payments for the reduced appropriations that we have. Now, on the income fund side, tuition and fees, you can see here that SIU Edwardsville has maintained the lowest tuition and fees in the state of all the universities, and I don't count Governor State because they indicated it's just a junior/senior university. And the Carbondale campus is the lowest of all of those five research universities. So we're making a case to the board that a moderate increase in tuition and fees is not going to not going to cause our situation to change appreciably. We'll probably still be the lowest in the state, even if we were able to get a 3% increase in tuition and fees. And it's not, it's not because we want to do that. God knows the pressure that families find themselves under, to afford a college education today. It's not because we want to raise them, we also have to operate the university. And as the state has declined in appropriations, that income fund, including tuition and fees, has to rise in order to make up for at least part of the reductions. So, okay. Now, the challenges that we have today, that we didn't have 10 years ago, I was chairman of the board 10 years ago, and we didn't have these challenges here on the SIUE campus. A declining student population. We've had years of growth, that have been so substantial, better than any other university in the state. We have higher tuition and fee costs now. Today, 10 years, if you go back to 2002, our tuition and fees today at SIU Edwardsville are 2.5 times higher than they were 10 years ago. That's how much we've had to increase, that income fund, to make up for the lack of what the state has failed to give us. The cash flow situation impacts our day-to-day and monthly ability to operate, because we never know when we're gonna get paid, although I'm in constant contact with the comptroller. There is a general understanding among all the public universities, that one university doesn't go out and get all their funding while others don't get any. So the comptroller's decision is that, is that we give an even amount, basically, proportionally to how much you get, to each university at a time. So I can't go up there politically and say, "Give us all of our money," while Western, or Eastern, or U of I, or others, don't get any. So, the state's negative credit rating really affects us when we go out on the market to sell bonds, to finance buildings, or whatever we need to do. Our credit rating just went from A2 stable, to A2 negative. There were three uni, that's only a one drop, there were three universities in the state that achieved that, U of I, Southern, and Illinois State. We were the only ones that dropped that one level. Northern dropped three levels. The other public universities in the state dropped at least two levels. So we felt pretty fortunate, in the way we've been managing our funds fairly conservatively, to maintain as high a level of credit rating as we did. So, but every time the state drops, and they dropped them in December to A2 negative, then it impacts the university's ability to keep a higher credit rating. Unless you're a U of I, which has a $3.5 billion endowment, you know, they don't worry too much about the flagship universities. Pension reform, we'll talk about this a little bit later. Pension reform is going to happen, I don't know how soon, it's being piecemealed through the legislature right now, a little step at a time, a part at a time, and in the end, that won't work. There's gotta be a comprehensive package passed, and right now, the ones that legislative leaders have put on the table, have been very severe toward employees, making you choose between health insurance, and COLA increase, and all kinds of things. And we, as university presidents and chancellors, have said, "We gotta do the best we can." We know there's gotta be shared sacrifice, but we're willing, over a 12-year period of time, as president of this university, I am willing to take from the state 6.5% of the normal cost, which they now assume, because as a university employer, or we don't assume any of those normal costs, and we're one of the few states that are still that way, we're willing to pick up 6.5%, which is a social security equivalent, from the state, and take that out of our operations budget. So, as you can see, pension reform is coming, and it's gonna be more money out of operations for us, because the state has such a deep hole, that they can't get out of it without some kind of radical reform. Increased level of scrutiny by state and federal governments, you can talk to the chancellor and others about this. We are in the midst right now of the federal and state governments demanding accountability at all kinds of levels that we didn't have five, or even six years ago. Everybody's tracking the money, and so it has been incumbent upon us to produce all kinds of additional reports to the federal government, to the state, and so on and so forth, that we didn't have. So the scrutiny, it's good in terms of the public understanding of what we're doing, and how we're spending their money, and using their money. Competition for university housing is gonna grow with new students coming in, it is now, and we're gonna have to look at private-public partnerships to be able to afford that, if we're gonna have to go out on the market and purchase bonds at high rates of interest in order to build buildings. So, these are challenges that we have, that we did not have as early as 10 years ago. Okay, I'm gonna hold off on this. That's the first part of what we're gonna do here today, I hope. That's trying to give you as complete understanding as I can about the budget and the budget process. Let's just take this segment right now, and turn up the lights a little bit, and let's see who has questions on this segment, before we get to pension reform. Sir, will you go to the microphone? I'm sorry, everyone needs to hear your question. Nope, must not be turned on. Can someone help us? Okay, here we go.
Do we have a board? And when will the board meet? Doesn't it have to have two meetings to approve tuition and fees? When might that happen?
Sure. I can't tell you precisely, because I don't know. I can tell you that negotiations have been taking place between the governor's office and the Metro East and Springfield delegation, over new members on the board. As you know, right now, because of the various conflicts over the last two years, the net result of that was threats being made to the Metro East board members, that they would be off the board, the governor took them off the board. So now, except for the student trustee, who has one meeting left, Marquita Wiley is the only board member representing the entire Metro East. The three other members of the board have tried for the last two meetings to elect a gentleman who used to be chairman, with three members, out of an eight-member voting board. The Edwardsville people walked out of the meeting. So, we have to have a new complement of members, and they've gotta represent Edwardsville at least equal to Carbondale. I insist on that, the Metro East delegation insists on that. The governor has yet to meet with any of us. He has refused since November, to meet with either the Metro East delegation or myself. So we don't know what's going on there. At any rate, there has been negotiations between the governor's staff and the Metro East delegation recently. I can't tell you anything about what that might be, except it will put Metro East board members onto the board, not the previous ones, but others, so that we at least have equal representation. Now, I hope the governor chooses to do that, before the May 8th board meeting, because we need to pass, we're not late yet, but we need to pass the tuition and fees at a minimum in this next board meeting, and look at numerous other things. If he, we have never been in a position where we couldn't do business. Okay. We can do all the business of the university, under a chairman pro tem. That's what the Edwardsville people have tried to get done the last two meetings. They've said, "Okay, let's hold off on electing officers, because we don't have anybody left on the board, basically, and we'll elect a chairman pro tem, and we'll do all the business that's on the agenda." We could've done that two meetings ago, but three members did not want that to happen, their priority was electing a chairman. So, come May, when we have to deal with these things, they're either gonna have to agree to go along with a chairman pro tem, so we can conduct business for this one meeting, but that person doesn't stay chairman, or the governor's gonna have to have three new board members appointed by then, so that we've got a full complement of the board. That's all I can really tell you. I think there's some progress being made, but, you know, if you're making progress with the staff, that's one thing, but the final arbiter here is the governor, and we don't know where he is at this point in time. And I'm not trying to be critical or anything, that's just facts as to where we stand. Yes, sir?
Thank you for that explanation. So if we do have a successful meeting on May 8th, and we need two readings to get tuition and fees approved, when might that final meeting be? Is there any discussion?
No, the meeting, the meeting on the 8th will be final approval of tuition and fees, because the boards had this two weeks prior to the March meeting, March or February even, February. So they've had all this information on tuition and fees for nearly three months, so there is no need now to have a board meeting to look at it informational-wise, because they've had the information, we just haven't been able to conduct business. So, this will be the final approval for tuition and fees in the May 8th meeting. Unless those members will refuse to go along with the chairman pro tem, then we can't do business. And there's no reason to do that, but we'll see. Sir? Can't see, hi Dean, are you, lights are bright.
Hi. I have one observation and one question.
Okay.
The observation that I made, when you showed the data, in 2002, state was giving us $2.52, or $100 that students pay.
Yes.
And I think that's, that was the logic behind charging 2.5 times our state and international students. And I see a 69 cents now. I wonder, you know, is it time for us to revise that, and maybe 1.69 times, or 1.7 times would be an appropriate charge for our state and international students?
We can certainly talk about that. The Carbondale campus has also indicated that they would like to see the reduction, but I think they're pretty close to regular tuition for international students now. But I don't know, just let me go back and take a look at that, because that hasn't come up recently, but I will do that, because both campuses frankly, benefit from the international students for lots of reasons, not just financially. They bring a whole new cultural asset to our campuses that our kids can learn from. So, I would like to see that expanded. And as you know, University of Illinois, I don't know if you all saw the Chicago Tribune articles past two or three months, but they've really been kicking U of I, because U of I has made the decision to greatly increase their international student load, and they haven't been able to pick up as aggressively on their state kids. And they're getting a lot of criticism for that, so we'll see. But I'll, let me take that into consideration, I can discuss it with our folks, and just see what we might wanna do, if we can do anything.
Sure. The question that I have, we've been, you said at the beginning of your presentation, that you seriously doubt that vote of trustees will take any tuition increase more than 3%.
I don't know if they'll take that even, Dean, but, you know.
Well, the question is that, I think they have access to the same information that you're sharing with us. They see what's happening. Even if they give us 3% tuition increase, that will come only through the new freshmen or new transfer students, or new grad students, which will be only a small portion of the 5% cut that we've been exercising, and you know how much anxiety that creates on campus.
I do.
So, what is the logic, why these people cannot understand that?
I appreciate the question, I really do. You know, if we were in the upper tier of universities with respect to tuition and fees, I can understand somebody saying, "Well, let's keep fees stable," or whatever, or tuition, but we're the lowest in the state already. And, I don't know, I can't answer that question, but we went in at 7% two years ago, they reduced it to 4. I'm gonna try to get 3%. I'm just gonna do the best I can, but, you know, with three members, I literally don't have much communication right now. But, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get 3% Dean, at least. I don't know if I can, but I'll fight for it, try to. Yes, sir?
Just to follow along with that, one thing that seems to be totally missing from this equation, is how efficient this university is.
Yes.
You're familiar with unit costs, but we have been the most efficient university for 10 years or more. We get no traction for that. So our staffing levels are already low, we're already about as efficient, in my opinion, as we can get, and then this is on top of it, so we're in a unique situation in dealing with this. And the faculty, staff, and students are really good at dealing with it, but I think we're about out of ideas and methods that we can use to be more efficient.
Yes.
I'm saying we need some help, I think, on this campus, on the funding side, and some freedom in being able to react to these challenges.
Okay.
I guess that was more of a comment than...
No, no, it's okay. It's all right. We understand the needs there, because we have asked, three years ago, I required the chancellors to develop a plan for efficiencies, as best as we can do them, under the financial situation that we face. And I know they're trying to do that, and I know you are about out of efficiencies. We got $13 million of efficiencies between the two campuses two years ago, and there are other things still being enacted, but we have to keep trying, because my judgment is, the financial situation of this state is gonna get worse. We're already 2% above the national average in unemployment, we haven't made any gains there, still 9.5%. I mean, yes ma'am, sorry.
We keep hearing that there is a possibility that departments might have to cut up to 25% of their operational budget within the next three years. This is something that's going to make many of the departments unable to function. So could you comment on how possible that is, this figure of 25% over the next three years?
Okay, who is, who... Okay, who is, who, who is being affected by the 25% rumor? That's, that's, I don't know anything about that because I, there's nothing on my playbook about a 25% reduction.
That's what I want to hear, if that's not happening.
Well, let's let Bill answer that because he may know.
So I believe what she's talking about is the three-year projections that were published about two or three months ago from the governor's office management budget that showed about a 5% cut this year, about six or seven percent this year and 13 the following year.
I thought you were talking about something internally, so forgive me for, for not recognizing They're going to project the worst-case scenarios that they can because the state is in such trouble. And I do think we're going to be facing 5% a year over the next two or three per years, two or three years. I don't think that's too far out of line from what I see coming down the road. We're going to have to assume the additional pension cost. We've got sequestration at the federal level that's going to cut us in areas of research and student aid and other things. So it may be that the state will be looking at all these things and, and as they did this year and last year, 6.14% last year, 5% this year. It may be that's what's down the road for our future, but I can't guarantee it won't be. I can only guarantee you that through the, our abilities to work with the state government and General Assembly particularly, all of us are going to be fighting to keep those cuts as low as possible. But that's all I can tell you at this point in time. I don't have an easy solution to offer you. You know, I don't. Other questions?
Yes, sir?
A lot of facilities managed and we've basically had a three-year classroom building. And so the question is, are we going to be selling those seats out in the next couple of years? And is that playing into the budget in the future?
Selling the seats out?
Are we going to have more room for students? And in that respect, are we going to hire faculty to fill those classrooms fully? I mean, we do have some dead time in classrooms throughout the day and in the evenings that isn't being utilized. But is there a plan maybe to, to grow faculty in the sense that we'll be able to increase the student body? There are students can't take all the classes they want.
Yeah. What we have tried to do on this campus particularly over the last several years is to build as much as we can to accommodate what we think will be increased enrollment, if you all want that. And we've got some new buildings coming online, as you know, that have to be managed, operated, maintained and so on. So we're trying to keep up with facilities. We're going to have to keep up on the housing side with more facilities also for students if we, if we increase our enrollment. So what, what, from what I have seen, I've heard the comments a couple of times, what we have tried to manage is equitable levels between faculty and students over these years. And faculty has increased along the order, and I think I have this on a slide here in a minute, along the order of 22 or 23%. And that's almost exactly what the student enrollment has gone up over that same period of time. So we're trying to keep that in balance as much as we can. And the chancellors have done a pretty good job of that. And, and obviously with the pressure that's been put on from the efficiency cuts and so on, if we enroll more students, we will have to increase faculty somewhat to keep up with that. But so far, Chancellor, I think I'm right about this, so far we've pretty much kept it in balance, have we not? The, the increases. So I'm hopeful that we don't have to sell the seats out, that we'll have enough space. And, and we certainly, the reason that I've been trying desperately to keep our bond rating as, as good as it can be is because we know we're going to have to go out on the market at some point in time and build some more space, particularly on this campus to accommodate the students. So we're, we're trying to keep it in balance as best we can. And as I indicated a while ago, the state has quit giving us any money for facilities, operations and on new buildings and stuff. And that's all got to come out of our operations budget. Other questions?
Hello.
Hi.
So we have been asked, place in the College of Arts and Sciences, to do an exercise of reducing 5% of our budget for this year.
Yes.
Okay. So what that means is our classes, our, we have to reduce salary, which means we're getting rid of a lot of our adjuncts. So our class sizes have to increase essentially.
Are what increased?
The class sizes have to increase.
Okay.
And what that means is the quality of education is going to go down because there's, if I have a classroom only at 40, now it's 80. How are we, you know, it's hard to assign papers and give exercises and critical thinking, writing. And so the question I guess I have is, how are we going to maintain the quality of education in the midst of all this?
Sure. And, and from an administrative viewpoint, we have to take a look at those things. But let me tell you, we're not going to get through this fiscal, fiscal crisis without sacrificing some things. It's just that way. The, the tenured track faculty and so on have their contract which basically protects them. The non-tenured track also have some protection in this thing. But there may come a point, and let's hope it doesn't happen that way, there may come a point when we have to consider layoffs down the road. If this situation keeps going at five or 6% reduction a year, you know, we can't even keep up with just letting people go and not filling positions. I'm not going to pull punches with you here. This is critical, it's serious, we're doing what we can to keep things in balance. But something will suffer eventually. And I hear you when you say the quality of education is going to suffer. I understand that. It will across the board for all universities, believe me, because they're undergoing the same thing from the state that we are. I, I can't tell you it won't in some ways. Decreasing graduate students, all of these things are going to make a difference down the road. So I guess what I'm asking is that you folks understand that we are trying to offset these things to keep the quality up, but the quality also depends upon the money you got to work with. And I, you know, we're not going to do any undue damage on this university that we don't have to. But we don't have the liberty to operate on an unbalanced budget.
President Bouchard, my name is Todd Braw, I'm the Director of Missions here. And I'd just like to make a comment, again, coming back to tuition. I guess it's a voice for the students that are coming into the institution.
Yes, sir.
I really hope that the board keeps in mind, and it's going to be a difficult task for us as it is already now, because we ask many of our new students to make a decision before, by May first. We're working with a projected tuition that many families, if you give them a certain percentage, are still, that, those dollars, whether it be $100 or $500, is a challenge for them.
Yes.
And when they have other options and they know their exact cost at those other options, many of them, and we've been hearing about it, I have a few examples, but we've been hearing that I might need to go to another institution because I know that they're stable and they have a tuition set. So as a voice for the new students, I really hope that the board keeps in mind, and if they delay that tuition.
Yes.
It is really going to impact to me, new enrollment for next year and for future years because that message is out there about that. So it's a comment, I thank you for your work with it, but.
No, I, I appreciate it. May I ask you a question?
You can.
The, no, it's okay. I know the May one deadline is something that you work with the students on. And I know it's critical to enrollment of new students. If they pass it on May eighth, which they can, you know, even, even with a pro tem chairman, if they pass it on May eighth, is that still going to sufficiently damage you in terms of enrollment or is that workable?
I think that's workable because it has been that way in the past.
Yeah.
In my opinion, it would be great if the board would consider that earlier on, because again, we're asking families to make a huge investment in their education of their child or for that child to make that investment and knowing what it costs before they have to make a decision. And the May one is for our incoming freshman class, our other students have later deadlines if they can consider us.
Okay.
So again, I think it will work, but if it is delayed, I can see it.
I understand.
Because we have to counsel those families as well in, in how they invest their money, how they can make those payments. So it could work.
Well.
But again, in my opinion, it would be great to have it sooner in two, two years.
I understand. The campus could go ahead and put a tuition increase out there to all the prospective new students. And if, if in fact we get a little more than that or we get a little less, that could be adjusted, couldn't it? But we're in the late stages right now. So if that May eighth board meeting doesn't work, let's go ahead and get busy and I will talk to the chancellor about that. Let's just do it. Yes, sir?
Scott, I work with Todd. We've done that and we do that routinely, that's sort of how the process works.
Okay.
A suggestion for the future for the new board.
Sure.
It won't cost a dime. If they could look at January as a date to set tuition fees. We know here for engineers, our number one competitor is University of Illinois.
Right.
For pharmacists, St. Louis College of Pharmacy.
Right.
For nurses, high, strong competition with St. Louis University.
Yeah.
Competitive marketplace, those institutions set the tuition fees in January.
Yeah.
Then they apply financial aid and then families have 16, 19 days to make that decision as the best value. So part of it's comparing what we're doing now to what we've always done and part of it's being realistic in a competitive marketplace. And I don't know what it would actually cost us, if anything, to move those dates up. Spend a lot of marketing, spend a lot of human capital to get those families here. And a simple move like that would be very helpful.
I promise you I'll work on that.
Okay.
I don't see why there should be any great reason that we couldn't move that date back anyway. But I appreciate that. Other questions? Yes, sir? We're going to go on to pension reform here in a few minutes, but I want to get all the questions about budget out of the way, if I may.
President Bouchard, thanks again for your openness and information.
Sure.
We can sit here and wring our hands and be anxious about things, but I think if there was something that we could do, the collective we, in terms of reaching out to the Board of Trustees.
Yeah.
What, what can we do as representatives of this institution and residents of the state of Illinois or taxpayers of the state of Illinois to get the governor and for that matter, the Board of Trustees off the dime?
Well, you can exercise your citizenship rights and responsibilities. That's what you can do. Just because you're a university or state employee doesn't mean you don't have the right to petition your government. That's a fundamental, basic tenet of our democracy. That could be done through your separate organizations and writing letters to the governor, to the, to the Metro East delegation, both Republican and Democrat, to basically say, we're, we're not going to tolerate this. You've put us in a bind here. We want this board situation settled as soon as possible. You don't have to be adversarial about it. But to be very honest with you, academics don't like to do that. When I was congressman and state senator, I could get a $5 million grant for SIU Carbondale, which I represented. I'd never hear even a note of thank you back from the university. I could put a $250,000 water tower in West Frankford, which has got 6,000 people, and I would get thank yous for two years. You know? So it's just, it's just, I think academia feels like, I don't want to get involved in politics, I just want to research, I want to teach, I want to fulfill my mission as, as faculty or staff, whatever. But gosh darn it, you're not separate from everybody else. And whether we like democracy or not, the squeaky wheel does get the grease. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to offend you, but this, this is true. Other questions? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Joy Ryan, I work in human resources. I'm wondering if, are there studies out there that indicate that the brick and mortar school is really most cost-effective as opposed to some of the online programs that, I hate to say, with the for-profit model has used?
Honestly, on the academic side of things, I would say maybe the chancellor would be much more adept at answering your question. I don't think that there is any sense of a full substitute for kids coming to this campus and being in the classrooms and being taught face-to-face with professors. I don't think there's any substitute for it. But, but let me tell you, if we're not going to go online and compete with other universities, particularly the private for-profits, they're ripping hundreds of thousands of millions of kids away from public universities today. And we simply have to be in, have some skin in the mix, is what I'm saying. Because online education is here, it's, it's going to mean a, a large increase in enrollment, whether it's here or somewhere else, kids are going to get it. We have situations right now in places in this system where there's eight to 10 private for-profit universities set up, teaching bachelor and master's degrees on community college campuses. Private, for-profit. They charge at least a third higher tuition than, than the kids could get at our university. But in some cases, I'll give you one for instance, we, one of the biggest recruiters of students in the southernmost counties of Illinois is a small Christian-based college over in Kentucky. They come to the community college and they say, if, if you will keep the students on the community college for another year, in other words, give one year of 100-level courses and two years of 200-level courses, we will count that, that second year of the 200-level courses as our junior year at our university. So then they finish the kids off with a online senior year. It's a cash cow operation, it's no more than that. The community colleges get to count those kids for reimbursement purposes for staying on their campus another year. And the private for-profit makes all the profit up, the kids, for finishing up in their university. Does anybody in here think that's right? So if we're not out there, online, teaching what we know to be quality education, this is the watered-down pebblem that higher education is coming to. And that's the truth. And not only that, but they're taking up billions of our education dollar at the federal level that go into those things. There's very low graduation rates, very low retention. I'm sorry, I'm not, I didn't come here to preach, but this is happening out there and we need to be aware of it. Other questions? Okay, are we ready for pension reform? What I want to discuss with you are the, we've been two years in trying to listen to every side of every issue on this pension reform. I'm talking about the university presidents and chancellors. And I've spent a lot of time, particularly with labor and what they're looking for and what they could agree to. Others have spent time with the business community and, and so on. Faculty associations, I mean, every, we've, we've listened to everybody. And we have come up with six simple steps. Now, this has been formulated and articulated in these steps by the University of Illinois, the public policy group there. This is their website, you can get all of this off of their website. But this represents, in as simplistic a form as we can put it, the, the, the thing that we think represents shared sacrifice from every. But this represents, in as simplistic a form as we can put it, the thing that we think represents shared sacrifice from everyone, including the state, the universities and colleges, the retirees, the present employees, and so on. And I'll just go through these steps. And I can't tell you that I understand all of them perfectly well, but I'll do my best to answer questions if I can. Go back to, go back to that one, Paula. Did I, did, okay. "We propose these steps to put the system on the path of fiscal sustainability while ensuring retirement security for participants, honoring the constitutional guarantee against reducing already accrued benefits." Okay, so this is broken up into three areas. One, to reduce the normal costs and liabilities of the Tier 1 defined benefit plan. I would say that probably 95% of you in this room are under the defined benefit plan Tier 1. Unless you came onto the campus after January 2011, you would, you would, you may be in a Tier 2 plan, which hasn't really worked. Focus on how the pension system should be funded. And institute a hybrid system to replace the Tier 2 program for current employees. Okay. So this is step one. Step one, "The retirement annuity of current and future retirees will increase annually by one-half of the unadjusted percentage increase, but not less than zero, in the Consumer Price Index U, which represents 87% of the people in the country that live in the urban areas." That's what the U stands for. "In the previous 12 months compounded upon the preceding year's annuity." Now let me try to give you an understanding of what I view this as meaning. And it's what the whole group does. Right now, you get a COLA that is an automatic 3% per year for all retirees. What that is, is not a inflation-adjusted COLA. That is just simply a 3% increase per year, no matter whether inflation goes up or we have deflation, which goes down, or whatever. So it's not tied to any critical economic index like inflation. The Consumer Price Index, okay? If I, it's, if I can explain this a little bit, the economists in here will certainly give a better explanation. But the Consumer Price Index is done once yearly by the federal government. It is a basket. And in that basket is about everything there is that economically affects a person's life. There's transportation, there's energy, there's housing, there's food, there's medical, all of these things combined. So what they do from one year to the next is compare this basket of all of these things to the next year to see if, in fact, as a whole, it has gone up or down in the prices that it mandates from one year to the next. So what's being suggested here is that because the COLA at 3% is the single largest deficit to getting this problem solved, there's no way the state can afford to continue the 3% COLA and hope to fix the unfunded liability of over $100 billion now to the pension system. So what this step says is that "The retirement annuity of current and future retirees will increase annually by one-half of the unadjusted percentage increase of the Consumer Price Index from the previous 12 months, compounded upon the preceding year." So let's, just look at this. The Consumer Price Index has been at about, in the area of 2% per year for the last several years. So that basket of goods and services has gone up about 2% per year. What we're suggesting is, is that we tie the COLA to that increase in the, in the inflation each year as determined by the Consumer Price Index rising. And that we give one-half of that unadjusted percentage, and let's say it's a, let's say it's 2%, as it has been for a number of years, then you would get a 1% COLA as opposed to a 3% COLA. Okay? That is the single biggest area which has to be contended with for us to put the pension system on a fiscally stable path. And it would be compounded upon the preceding year's annuity. If you're drawing $20,000 right now, and you gained $200 as a result of half of the percentage increase of the Consumer Price Index, the next year, it would go from $10,200 upward. It wouldn't go back to $10,000. So it is compounded annually. This has the impact of reducing the normal cost going forward and reducing unfunded liabilities of over $100 billion. Okay, so that's the first step. The second step is, going forward, the effective rate of interest. Now, this is primarily talking about the people who have the Money Purchase Benefit formula. Nothing will be changed on that from what is accrued in the past. But going forward, okay? That formula, including some other things like the portable lump sum refunds, purchase of service credits, that sort of thing, would be tied to a value equivalent to 75 basis points above the interest paid by a 30-year U.S. Treasury bond, which right now, the 30-year U.S. Treasury bonds, it's about 2.7%. So if you add another 75 basis points, you're looking at about a 3.5% rate of interest if you're in the Money Purchase Benefit formula as opposed to the 7% to 8%, which has been accruing to this formula, much higher than the defined benefit and other things for most people. The SERES Board and the Comptroller sets this effective rate of interest every year. And they've been setting it so high that the state can't possibly keep up with that interest rate. So the suggestion is here, if you're on the Money Purchase Benefit formula, that you will receive a value equivalent to 75 basis points above the interest paid by the 30-year U.S. Treasury, about 3.5%, which is where people who are not on that formula are getting about 3% in the COLA. So we would propose changing that to reduce it to about half of where it stands now going forward with the Money Purchase Formula. That would reduce the normal cost going forward and reduce the unfunded liabilities to the state. The third step, let me move over to this side for a moment. The third step is that universities and colleges will contribute up to 6.2% of the pension-eligible payroll of their employees to fund the annual normal cost. This is what the normal cost shift or transfer means. The cost shift will be transitioned at a rate of 0.5% of pensionable pay per year for the first 11 years and 0.7% for the 12th year. 6.5% is, is the social security level that we pay. The state doesn't pay now, but if we're going to pick it up, we're not going to go any higher than that. So what will happen is, out of that 140, what was the figure of the income fund and the state appropriations together? It was 100, let's say it was 175. I don't remember what I put up there exactly. But out of, out of that operations budget, those revenues, we will have to take a half a percent a year. And the university will now pay that on behalf of the employees, not the state. Because this has to give, we have to give the state the opportunity to reduce those normal cost payment obligations. Otherwise, we never get out of the hole. From the time I last talked to you about pension reform, a little bit over a year ago, the state's pension obligations have increased another $5 billion. They're right at $100 billion now. They were less than $95 billion then. So you have to stop this, or the whole system falls apart. And we have to give the state some way to reduce their cost in order that they might give us some guarantees of paying off the unfunded liability with the money they're saving in these two things. Or three things. Can you go back to that just a second? So this is what the normal cost shift means, is that we will now be picking up the state's normal costs for our employees. There's only four states in the Union that still do it the way Illinois does it. This is pretty much standard operation throughout the rest of the country. Step four, "All employees enrolled in the Tier 1 defined benefit program will contribute an additional 2% of pay toward pension costs at a rate of an additional 0.5% of pay a year for the next four years." The additional employee contribution will not be included in the calculation of benefits under the Money Purchase Formula. That would, again, raise that formula so high that it would be unaffordable. The impact of this is that it reduces the normal cost payment obligations for the state. So each employee, each state employee, would be increased by 2% from 8% to 10% of their pay as their contribution to the pension system. The fifth step is sharing the funding liability. There's two steps to this. "In return for the above cost shifting, the state shall be required to amortize the current unfunded liabilities." $100 billion, $22 billion for SERES, I think is the right figure. All five pensions together, over $100 billion now. "In accordance with a payment schedule that steadily improves the funding ratio and is calculated based on a straight-line amortization of the current unfunded liabilities with a reasonable closed amortization period." Furthermore, the state shall be contractually obligated to contribute to the pension system each year the full amount of its payment obligations. If the state fails to make that full payment, the pension system or any of its members may take legal action to compel the state to make that payment. Here's what the state does now. The state says, "Okay, we have a $60 billion obligation in unfunded liabilities toward pensions. Here's what we're going to do to pay that off. We're going to pay a couple of billion for the first 10 years each, and then that's going to rise to 10, 15, 20 billion over the next several years, over about a 30- to 40-year period." They backload the highest payments toward the end. So nobody can force them contractually, constitutionally, because they say they're trying to pay this off, but they're paying so little upfront, it doesn't matter. And they're backloading everything to the future when they know they can't pay it. That's how the state is operating right now. So to take care of the $22 billion of SERES, okay, they might pay a little bit upfront, backload everything to 25 to 30 years down the road when they don't have the money to pay it, and then we end up in a situation like this. What this says is that "In return for the cost shifting, i.e. the university's picking up the state's share, the state shall be required to amortize the current unfunded liability of SERES, that $22 billion, in accordance with a payment schedule that steadily improves the funding ratio and is calculated based on a straight-line amortization of the current unfunded liabilities with a reasonable closed amortization period." Meaning, we're going to set a reasonable amortization time of 30 years to pay this off. And we're going to annualize the payments equally each year. We're not going to pay nothing in upfront and everything on the back end, which breaks the system, which we know we can't afford. Then the SERES has the right to sue the state constitutionally if they do not meet their yearly payment to the pension system. Now, this is the only way we're going to get rid of the unfunded liability over the long haul, which we have to pay for. You have to pay a little bit more. You're going to take a little bit reduced the benefits. The university's going to pay up to 6.5% of the state's share. And the state is going to give us, constitutionally, a method of payment of the $100 billion that they're now in arrears so that we can be sure that when we retire, we have a pension system left there. And if we can't assure that, then it's all going to fall apart, and there's not going to be anything left. And they will eventually start reducing the state's contribution to the pension funds. And there'll be a constitutional argument over that also, because as you know, some people think right now they can't reduce anything constitutionally. So at any rate, we're recommending this as a way to force the state to be contractually obligated to contribute to the pension system each year, not wait 20 years down the road, but each year, the full amount of all of its payment obligations. If the state fails to make that full payment, then the pension system or any of its members can take legal action to compel the state to make that payment. Right now, there's nothing that compels them to make the payment. And the payments they make are menish from one end to the other until you get to the back end, and they say, "Okay, we got to come up with $10 billion this year," or $12 billion, knowing they don't have the ability to do it. So it jeopardizes the whole system. This assures long-term funding and amortization of unfunded liabilities. Okay. The sixth step, as I think you remember when I talked to you last time, in January of 2011, we had initiated for new employees a Tier 2 system, which meant that they could come in and not pay the defined benefit, but elect to pay a defined contribution of investing their money themselves. I don't want to get too complicated with this. But that system has not worked to this point in time because the universities, having no skin in the game themselves, have not ever calculated into hiring new personnel the cost of the pension. The state's taking care of that. So this will force us now, through the development of a Tier 2 system that now depends upon the university and their employees to define the benefits. If you decide to have a self-managed plan or another plan, the university will be responsible for putting a plan together which offers you a plethora of options from which you can choose to invest the money according to the way you want to invest it. And the university will make a contribution to match your fund up to a certain level. We're thinking maybe up to a 4% level or something in that order. But that will be determined by the universities. So that you will have the option of not the defined benefit, but this is, this is new employees, but of having a defined contribution plan. but of having a defined contribution plan. Now, if you're presently an employee, you can opt into the defined contribution plan, and decide to manage from here on, your funds, according to what you are offered through the university. If you do that, then eventually, when you retire, you will have whatever you've accrued under the defined benefit, which is what almost all of you are under now. Let's say you've worked 20 years already, your pension is calculated on the basis of 20 years, times 2.2%, times the average of your top four years salary. That's the way your pension is determined now. What this would say is, that you could stop the defined benefit right now, you've accrued, whatever you've accrued, let's say 20 years of pension, under the defined benefit, at that calculated rate, and you could use the next 10 or 15 years, depending upon how long you want to retire, you could use that as a defined contribution plan, and at the end, you get both. You get the benefit you've accrued from the defined benefit, and you get whatever has happened in your own management, among the options you've been giving, for managing your own money. So this has the, you've got six months to make that choice. If you want to leave the defined benefit, keep it, it'll be there for you at retirement, and opt into the defined contribution for the rest of your term, but you've got six months, and it's an irrevocable choice, to make that on the effective date of the new plan. So the impact of this, is that it reduces state normal cost payments, by shifting costs to the universities and colleges. Institutions gain flexibility to design the system, to fit their own needs. Now, it's not going to happen, that the chancellor says, well, I'm only going to offer two options here, for your investing in. You know, that has to be taken to the campus community, through the financial people, through the human resources people, working with the chancellor, planning budget council, and so on, to look at all the various options, and offer a basket of those to you, and then you pick and choose from among those plans. This is not unlike, the defined benefit is still tantamount to social security, it's always there, you're always going to have it. This is, this is more tantamount to the 401K and other plans, in which you invest your own money. Okay. Those are the six steps. I will go over any or all of those again. Please ask me whatever questions you might ask, but remember, if we're truly going to solve this problem, we're not going to be able to cherry pick just the things we want. Because that will never work. The system, the pension system will get worse. This requires shared sacrifice. We've done the best we could do, at defining a plan, that we think these steps will not only keep our retirement system intact and healthy, over a long period of time, make sure that we pay off the unfunded liability, so that in 30 years, with equal payments, that we can assess each year, not having to wait till the end of the payment plan from the state, we can hold them accountable, year by year, to making the required contribution. So we fix the long-term unfunded liability. The universities have to pick up a certain amount out of their operations to do this. The employee has to pay another 2%, and there are some reduced benefits, that going forward, tying the COLA to the half percent of the Consumer Price Index, each year, as opposed to an absolute solid 3%. All of these things are in the mix. We think, given the fact that people have tried to force us to support a plan, for making you determine whether you want the COLA or healthcare benefits from the state, that's an unwise choice, to put up on people's backs. We've tried to ameliorate some of the more egregious things, that legislators and legislative leadership has come up so far, to want to just get this off the state's back entirely, and put it on everybody else's back. But there's shared, there's shared sacrifice here. And it has to come from every sector, the state, the universities, the employees, as well as all the other systems. So, I may have really mixed you up on this, but remember, this is a proposal that we put forward, to try to bridge the gap between all these competing formulas, that we think could work. And we'll just see. I can't come here and tell you, that I can cherry pick off the things that you don't want. I can't. My whole life, in state senate and in congress, I have had to make really hard choices. Maybe, if I had a bill come before me, with which I agreed to 60% of it, I thought I had a great day. 40% of it, I never would have voted for on its own. But that's what we're stuck with. We're stuck with getting something together, that crosses all the bridges, enables shared sacrifice. Don't expect you to agree with all of it, but I hope you will understand, that the hard choices have to be made, or our system is not going to succeed. So what questions may I attempt to answer for you? Can I turn those lights up? Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Reine.
Larry.
I retired in 1999. I'm still alive, so I'm costing assistance the money I owe. My question is, first of all, this is a very comprehensive, systematic, economically sound plan.
We think it is.
When I look at the prosthema, of things that are coming out of the legislature, dozens of plans, amendments, draconian measures.
Yes.
How are we going to get from there to here? Is it possible? It just seems like pie in the sky, concerning what's coming out of the legislature now.
Well, we, first of all, what the legislature is trying to do now, is pass a little piece of something at a time. No one has really offered a comprehensive approach, like we have. And it won't work a piece at a time, because when it gets in one chamber, they'll turn it down, and the other chamber will be, turn their proposal down. We have, we have been deliberate and methodical about developing this, with what we think are some of the best minds in the state, in the Public Policy Institute at U of I, along with our point people, throughout the systems. We've been working on this for two years, and we, you know, we know we're not going to please everybody, but we know there is a way to get there. So we have taken this to legislative leaders, who have not turned it down, they're seriously looking at it. We've taken it to the governors, OMB, a person, as well as their chief staff people, who are trying to work on these things, they have not turned it down. We think this proposal probably has more broad-based support right now, than any proposal that's come to the table. I mean, we're doing our homework right now, we're doing a lot of legwork, talking to a lot of people. And I think there's a possibility, if not the totality of this plan, at least a good portion of it being in whatever eventual plan they come up with. I know you probably think the sacrifice is too great, and it may be, but man, this is a complicated thing at this point. Yes, sir.
Thank you for being with us this morning. You said that the legislative session ends May 30th, or at least that's what it says?
I think that's what they put on them, because they always go to the end of June anyway, so.
If they're unable to pass pension reform this year.
Yes.
Does that basically mean that whatever would get passed next year, it wouldn't be effective until fiscal year 15?
Probably. Unless they come back in the veto override session in November, and pass something, but I don't think that's a likelihood. They don't take up a lot of substantial things in veto override session. Our hope is, that although there are some people who are saying it'll never pass, because we'll never find the middle ground to get together on this stuff, and there are some people think, who for certain political reasons, some people don't want it passed, yet. But my sense is, is that, is that this whole debate is very serious right now, and there is an urgency about it, that these legislators have never seen before, in any of their deliberations. I think we can pass it. I think we can pass a plan, by the end of this legislative session. Unless just pure politics gets involved, and everything goes down the tube. That could happen too. Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that if the legislation passes on this, and the state defaults on the amortization, we have the right to sue the state?
That's right.
But isn't that like getting blood from a turtle?
No.
Because there's no money to get back to us.
No, because, because the state's budget has to be built around this particular thing. They are obligated, if we put it into the law. The problem is, they're obligated now, it's how they choose to pay off the debt. And they pay so little upfront, by the time they get back here, they can't possibly pay, to pay off the debt. So what we're saying is, they should pay an equal installment, every year, for 30 years, or 40, the timeframe isn't as important, as making sure that the system is stabilized by adequate annual payments, not letting the state off the hook, saying, we'll deal with this 20 years down the road, which is where they, what they do now. So we will have the right to sue them, under this, if they don't come through with the annual contribution, that stabilizes the long-term unfunded liabilities.
Yeah, I believe we've been paying a half of 1% pension now, for the COLA, since I started working here, that's what I've been paying.
I don't know what that contribution is, sir, is that correct? For the COLA?
Yes.
The COLA you get when you retire?
I've been paying a half of 1%.
Bill, you want to answer that? I'm not sure what that, I don't know, I don't know what you mean, by that.
Well, it's like buying insurance, paying for a COLA upfront, over the past 20 something odd years?
I don't, anyway.
Half of the cost of living, the urban cost of living, is, sounds real good, but, you know, if inflation goes rampant, like it did back in the 70s, there are going to be a lot of poor people.
No, you're going to be protected. Because, in the 70s and 80s, inflation every year, for a period of over a decade, was at 7% to 10%. So under this system, 10%, you're going to get a 5% COLA. So you're protected against the inflation, under this system. You are not under the 3% annual COLA increase, if inflation goes up. And that's one of the benefits here, as a trade-off, is that if we get back into a period of high inflation, that Consumer Price Index is what indicates that. And if it goes to 10% again, you're going to get a 5% COLA, not a 3. So this is protection against future inflation, the way we have it established. But, but, but the cost of living has to be tied to inflation, or else it isn't a cost of living increase. That's the standard by which we measure that, in our society. Just saying that you're going to get a 3% COLA, no matter what, that is not tied to inflation. What if inflation does go to 10%? You know? So we think, over a period of time, this protects you against high inflation. Right now, when it's 2% a year, in the CPI, obviously, you're going to get less. But if that thing ever goes above 3%, then you're going to be protected.
Okay, what if the $9 billion that the state borrowed from our pension system, what of that? Is there any protection that they can't borrow from our pension system again?
Well, sir, the state has borrowed a lot more than $9 billion. It has over $9 billion right now, in bills, that it can't pay. I think actually, that's over $10 billion now. But that's separate and apart, from the pension system, basically. That's just what they owe on all kinds of things. They have not kept up their responsibility, to fund the pension system. They have borrowed from it, you know, but they borrowed from a lot of things. But, you know, they got to figure out, if they're going to solve this or not. And they're not going to solve it through promising the people, everything that they want. They've got to sit down, because they are charged with the big picture. They have information available to them, that no single individual in the state has, from all kinds of angles, and you sent them there to make a decision, about what is in the best long-term interest of the state. You know? And that's what they've got to do. We think a package like this is realistic, and will help them meet their $100 billion obligation for the pension systems, that they have, they have not met. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see you over there, pal.
Looks like it's going to be a tough year to go, Katie. We're going to be going into, if this system went into effect, a 2% decrease in wages, right off the bat, it's going to be tough to set across the table, and try and negotiate wages. With that being said, are you looking at more contracting out type of issues? And that's what my people would be really shaking about.
As a way of saving money to contract out work?
Yes.
That hasn't come across the screen, at this point in time, to my knowledge. Now, that's always a possibility, with the university. But this university, I can tell you with surety, is not going to fail to our obligation, contractually, to our people. We're not going to do that. If we put down a contract in writing, we're going to honor that. If some things can be outsourced, you know, without violating the contract or something, we would be obligated to sit down with you, and work those things out. You know? But, as in everybody's interest, I'm charged with seeing the big picture, and making sure that we keep a budget, in this university system, and on these campuses, that is balanced. It may cause us some, some turmoil right now, but I don't have any choice. That is not the intention that we have discussed, in creating efficiencies within the system, but if it got so bad, that it came to that, you would be the first person to sit down and talk to, and your people. The AFL-CIO, when we sat down with them, on this proposed budget, now, this is not a formal thing, but the impression I got from their leadership, was that the 2% from 8% to 10%, they could, they could handle, in some way or the other. There's a few other problems, I think, that labor might have with this approach, but labor won't get everything they want either. You know? I wish, I don't know, I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you for coming and explaining all this in great detail, it's very hard to understand, we appreciate your time.
I know, it is.
Secondly, thank you for leading the charge, to actually come up with a proposal, as opposed to just wringing our hands collectively. And I agree, it's going to take shared sacrifice.
Yes, sir.
And thank you again, for offering to have the universities pick up part of that cost, to save our pensions.
Yes.
We appreciate it. We appreciate all that. The impact bullet on each of your slides.
Yes, sir.
Talk about the impact to the state. It didn't talk about the impact to the individual. It would be nice at some point to understand in dollars and cents what this means to us.
Yeah.
Having a compounded COLA is a big deal that a lot of people don't understand and I'm glad that's in there.
Yes.
But what will it mean to the pension? What will it mean to our contributions over time? That's, it's hard to understand.
I know. I tried to simplify it as much as I could, but I'm sure I've confused a lot of you. But if you will go online and look at these six steps and study them more, I think you'll understand better than what I'm trying to do in my own feeble approach to it. Actually, that impact statement at the bottom was how it impacted the state's system, our SIRS system. You know, in some cases, it talks about giving the state the ability now to impact the unfunded liability in a positive way. In some cases, it impacts the university in a more difficult financial way, but we're willing to pay it. If we don't pick it up out of our operations budget, it's going to accrue to you folks in paying more than the 10% that's being proposed. There's got to, it's got to be made up somewhere. And we did not want to be unrealistic and come to you and say, "Well, we're not going to ask you to do anything." So we thought we could ask of you what was possible without hurting too much, but what was necessary for the universities and the state to do to solve this long-range problem. And it's balanced as best we could do it, you know? I appreciate your thank yous. Sir?
Yeah, I have a question. This is kind of along the line with the statements. I fall in tier two pension system.
Yes.
I specifically made a choice of the self-managed plan due to the stability of the plan and also the retirement age.
Yes.
With that self-managed plan. However, I did, I do like the idea of a defined benefit.
Yes.
I just wasn't confident in the stability of the system at that time. This plan seems like it would give that stability and you mentioned that people who currently have the defined benefit would be able to make the choice to switch.
If they want to.
Would people who currently have the defined contribution be able to go the other way?
Well, what's going to change is you can, there'll still be a defined contribution, but it's now going to be prefaced upon your being offered by the university, a basket of choices for investment, not the fact that it's coming from the state because the state is no longer paying the pension system, we are. And so if we're going to contribute to a defined compensation benefit for you, we want to give you choices because we're now going to have to look at, how can we match that or how can we match it proportionally? Because we're going to try to help you in whatever investment choice you make under defined contribution to match it as much as possible. Our society is divided about what's best. Social Security as a defined benefit or people investing their own money at their own risk. You will be given a basket of choices, not so much different than what you're doing under the self-managed plan, which will run from very low-risk investment to very high-risk investment, not unlike what your broker or a financial advisor would give you in the end. And you have to decide how much risk you want your money to assume. So it won't be a whole lot different, but it now enables the university participate because we now have to take into consideration retirement pension benefits for all new employees coming in. It used to be we didn't worry about that. So if we're going to do it, then we want control over that basket of opportunities for you and cut the state out of it because they're not giving you hardly any options. Yes, ma'am.
For those who are finding that it makes sense to take their money, set up an affordable plan, does the windfall elimination act also impact that?
Does the, I'm sorry.
You mentioned social security before and how it affects the self-managed plan. The windfall elimination act still impacts that?
Well, I was comparing social security to the defined benefit.
Okay.
Which is still intact and will always be intact for present employees, okay? Until they retire.
Okay, if someone does, we're saying if you people who have made sense out of taking, they're in the affordable plan.
Yes.
And they take their money.
Yes.
They still pay out.
Uh-huh.
If they work in the capacity where they recover by social security, are they still limited on what they can receive with social security and that payout?
Well, social security has a limit. I forget what that limit is right now, but yes, our defined benefit program is not equivalent to social security, only in concept, not exactly proportional in money, if you know what I'm talking about. So I think if you take your money out of the defined contribution side, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay. I don't think you'll be penalized for that on the other side with social security or anything else, you know? No, I don't think there's a windfall thing there anywhere that we've ever discussed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do have one other question. Based on your experience and your thoughts about the future, you mentioned also the constitution and more and more people talk about if they have decided to open the constitution, we should have opened no. I take it that we are not secure in terms of all these plans right now. If we move more and more towards more of a yes vote to open the constitution, we could be in a point where we want to renegotiate all of these ideas, right?
You know what? We can argue this point constitutionally and the folks who say, you know, you can't reduce benefits constitutionally under any circumstance, all right? They may win that argument, but the system will fall apart anyway because there's no money there to support it. We're going to have to change how we fund this system or it's going to fall apart. And that's the truth. I'm not trying to be an alarmist, but I've looked at this thing as much as anyone, I think. And we may win the constitutional argument, but we will break the system and the state will be broken too. It's already broken, but we're trying to save the system. I think this constitutional argument is stronger in terms of saving the system, is getting the state to do what they say they're going to do on an annual basis rather than giving them the liberty to determine when they're going to pay and how much they're going to pay to stabilize the system.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, ma'am.
I have a question on point two.
Paula, can you pull that up? Second step.
Okay. For those individuals who do have.
The money purchase plan.
And the money purchase.
Uh-huh.
From what I could understand, I'm asking you to clarify, please, it seems like it's going to go from like apparently 8% growth to like a more 3%.
Actually, it's going to go from about 8% to 4%.
From 8%.
Close to 4%.
Okay, so that's a reduction of 4%?
Just about.
And then there's.
Because that 8% interest is so high that the state can't afford to do that anymore. So, you know, you could expect a return on your investment if you've got the money purchase benefit plan, more along the line of what other people can do. It is reducing the benefit, which we think is sort of a windfall if you've got the money purchase plan. It will reduce that.
So it's reducing it by 4% and then there is the 2% that's being asked to add to the 8%?
Yes.
So that's 6%. Then there is the 1.5% cost of living reduction, so that's from 3% possibly to 1.5%?
Yes.
So when you add those up, that's like 7. something percent?
No, they're not all equivalent in that way.
Because I was trying to think about what Mr. Health said, they have, and I was trying to add those things up. So there's like approximately a 6% to 7% decrease in retirement for those individuals who may be affordable or in the self-managed plan when you add up over a long time.
No, what we're doing is equalizing the money purchase plan to the defined benefit plan that's already there. So you're not going to be able to draw 8% interest on your money anymore. You're going to draw more like 4% or 3%, okay? And that's reasonable. The money purchase plan has given people a great advance, a great advantage in the past because the comptroller and the SIRS system sets that rate and they've always set it high. The state can't afford it anymore. So you will be assuming the same sacrifice with respect to the COLA as everybody else. The only difference to you will be that the money purchase formula will have a lesser rate of interest.
Okay, so then you just add the additional things like the 10%, 2% that you're asked to pay and then that additional cost. So when you add those things up, they could realize a significant loss to retirement of approximately 6 to.
Well, they'll realize more of a loss for retirement for money purchase options than they will defined benefit people or defined contribution people. That is true. But it puts everybody at the same level nearly.
I was just trying to individualize it.
Yeah.
To look at.
Sure, I understand. Okay, thank you. Well, is it 12 o'clock?
12:15.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I am really sorry. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Let the chancellor know if there's anything. Okay. I didn't know it was that long. Wow.